Thank you. The consent calendar consists of approval of the agenda, an amendment to the December twentieth one on regular session minutes. Approval of financial report from March twenty twenty four, April twenty twenty four, May twenty twenty four.
Could I would post an amendment to be struck through April twenty twenty four and May twenty twenty four?
Through April twenty twenty. Motion to approve the agenda. So moved Mr. Mayor's second.
Second.
On favor.
Ah.
Thank you. Item three is public forum now. We're gonna have a short presentation on the the water main project that's scheduled for after July first of next year. So uh that's not gonna be a question and answer period. It's gonna be an information period. There'll be question and answer periods regarding that project a little later on. Uh but if you have anything other than water main on your li- mind at the moment, now it's time to step forward and address the council. So adhering none, I will close public forum. Uh the only thing to add to my report is uh we have a local gentleman named Peter Francisco. This is Francisco, Lieutenant Commander Francisco, retired from the Coast Guard last Thursday, and he uh has settled here a little while back. Thought it was a really great place to spend spend his retirement and with his family here. And uh he had his retirement ceremony at Canal Basin Square. It was really neat. We had a couple of captains and uh people he worked with in the Pentagon, and he bust them all in, and we had a nice catered lunch and uh it was just real nice to have somebody like that uh choose Scottsville to uh offer his talents and volunteer for things that might be going on around here. So that's uh last week, and I will mention too that uh unfortunately, I lost another friend and the community lost another valuable member when John Smith from the funeral home passed away this morning at the hospice and pain lot. Uh I don't know anything about any plans or services yet, but uh that will be forthcoming, I'm sure. Sorry to hear that. Yeah. So um that is my report staff report. In fact, some staff to report.
Um, just a follow up. Uh I'll review some of uh my registered staff report. During review of minutes with Assistant uh Town Attorney Jim Bowling, um on his report that he followed up on last Monday, uh we found a typo in our minutes that excluded a roll call vote. So we reviewed him with notes from previous town clerk and reviewed uh video recordings. And uh that explains the consent agenda correction. Um beyond that, I provided a brief in our staff report on the update for fiscal year twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three audit um with the help of uh our town clerk and RFC, our accounting firm, we were able to uh find the recommended journal entries that needed to be corrected to clear up the discrepancy. Um and then that following allowed us late last week to include uh actuals in the budget that's presented to y'all. Um beyond that, I think this is example of town staff uh continuing to improve our bookkeeping of the town and improvement in financial transparency for the public, uh which is required legally and ethically uh for our town government. So uh I am sending out, I sent it an email, T P R C sending out bounded copies that I'll share out with you guys next time I see you. But beyond that, I shared the PDF uh over email so you can also take a look at the uh the fine details on it. Um beyond that, um I provided a summary of our supplemental financial uh supplemental appropriation for financial year ending June thirtieth, so this fiscal year. Um so as shown in our uh budget I presented to you, Melody Porter or town clerk was able to find and improve our budget, our budgetary bookkeeping because we were inaccurately accounting for payroll liabilities. So this is another great uh um example of a better bookkeeping and accounting in the town. Um beyond that, that led to a large uh, we had a large wage savings with the uh vacancy in our police department and also this item. This was a department wide, and I believe two months ago I I reported for administrative for the streets department that we found the same issue. So we just kind of tightened up everything. Uh beyond that, uh as you can see in the gen- in the uh in the projected budget, we're looking at a surplus of twenty six thousand for this fiscal year. And then um we are looking at uh let's see what else. Um this projected fiscal year twenty three, twenty four is taking into account um changes we've had in the year, including unexpected uh revenue increases and then just the well, at this point, expected uh cost of everything going up, uh including uh breakage of staff equipment and also uh increased uh expenses in regards to staffing. Um the last piece I touched upon a little bit was just an update on our fiscal year, next fiscal year. Um I'm glad to report that we have uh an increasing capital improvement, five thousand of that, or seven thousand five hundred, five thousand of that is due to the successful Bama Works grant for E nine one one sign project. So we're set up for the next year once council decides how they implement that program. Uh at least we have that support of Bama Works uh for our budget and moving forward. Um beyond that, um we see a, I'm rereporting that due to the delays that we have with the reimbursement for the twenty three USDA police car grant. Uh towards the end of July twenty twenty four, we'll see a reimbursement on that whole due amount, which was seventy thousand. Um all that reflected in the uh presented budget. Um and please reach out with any questions you have. So catch.
Questions for staff? Thank you. Uh Mr. Berset is not here. How about Mr. Ritzko? Anything to report on planning commission?
Mr. Mayor, thank you for attending in my absence as I was busy in the tour world. I believe what you represented in the meeting was mostly related to the ongoing work on the comprehensive plan and also the focus of the meeting on there being a potential uh need for another person on the planning commission. Maybe you could explain that a little bit, since it was a little bit confusing.
Yeah, uh Liz uh Knott uh had indicated that she did not resign, that she says she was not going to serve another term. She did not want to be considered for another term. So when her term ends, the June thirtieth, there will be a vacancy. So it's not a resignation. It's just a election by the member not to ask to be reappointed another term.
Thank you.
And we've had a couple of candidates uh put their name in the hat for that upcoming vacancy. So keep it posted on that. Anything else? Probably as busy as council member right at the moment. It's Miss Pines with the events and we've got uh batto there for tomorrow. We've got fourth of July and uh
We do have a batto the day after tomorrow. I am very pleased to report we have um a a nice, large number of vendors that are gonna be coming out. That was my only real concern was the, you know, our vendor numbers, but last minute, they all started coming in. So we have a night, a good, good amount of vendors. Um got a few food trucks, the music. Um now our only concern is the water level, which we can do nothing about. Um I was talking to Ashley today over at Reeling and Rafting to find out how the the flow has been going. So unfortunately, we're expecting the batto sometime after six P M., which is pretty much when what everything is gonna be wrapping up for the Batto Festival, but we will have the reenactment from the um
They're still planning on where we were in the afternoon.
Yeah, probably about three o'clock is gonna be the reenactment.
Should be good.
It's gonna be a great, it's gonna be a great day with the with the Canal Society and everybody else and uh still putting the finishing touches on um Fourth of July, but we have a great music lineup. We can have some great vendors for Fourth of July also and uh pretty much the way it's looking right now, you could come out for the parade in the morning and not go home until after five.
The memories is weird.
Yeah, and it it's just gonna be an all day thing. So those two are wrapping up and I have begun looking forward to August and September for our next events. Um talking to a few local actors in the area to to see about the Founder's Day celebration and do um kind of like the Twilight Tour for that. And uh Melody and I are working on a fundraising event for Canal Basin Square in August, which will be uh a lot of craft vendors and some uh raffles and, you know, just a like a fifty fifty raffle, silent auctions, some vendors and um that will all go towards the improvement of Canal Basin Square and hopefully getting a new uh you know, box or for those for the show space and yeah, so busy, busy, busy.
Also, I'll mention on Friday, the twenty first is the tenth anniversary of the Girls' Club, and at five o'clock, you know, it will be a a celebration for a couple of hours, uh free barbecue, um tours of the facility, and then a six dish uh Senator Kane will address those present. So if you're got a chance to come on down, if you've not been to the Boys and Girls Club, come on by and uh and and take the tours. There'll be a silent auction there and some merchants have been kind enough to uh provide gift cards and and other items to that, so.
And also on Saturday, I didn't mention this one, um is our Pollinator Festival. So that that one is being spearheaded by scan and the chamber. So I haven't worked too much on that one, but it is going to be a great event and everybody come out. We need to have our Pollinator Day every year to keep our our beast city status. So that'll be another good event. It's gonna be busy. It's a lot of events.
Thank you for your hard work. Mr. Hudson, you have anything else?
Well, I sent out the minutes, but I could go briefly for the uh park and the government service to the park. Uh it's coming along very well. We've had a lot of successes uh and they put the accomplishments down. So in the last six, seven months, we uh got the the trail maps and the park rules all printed and laminated and put on the kiosks. Um removed the uh help with the overlooked table trail and moved phone line and dead trees and got some two boundaries. Uh we got some quotes for the dock access and we're we're gonna fix the dock a little bit better, but we're not gonna do the road for a while. We're gonna get some quotes for the road. Um we also got some quotes for fixing up Canal Basin Squares. And we moved all the picnic tables to the best, some good locations. I think we got all the picnic tables we need there. And we don't have enough money this year, but next year we want to try to look, see if we have the money to uh address the the road access, because the road needs a lot of work. But uh the parks are in pretty good shape, but the town maintenance guy is really taking good care of it and uh uh he's helped out a lot with the uh the trails too.
Questions for Mr. Hudson?
Thank you, sir. All right, and it's with government services, uh uh the several recommendations from government services, the initiative memo to understand of understanding uh Scottsville and D B hot regarding the roads uh and Scottsville's roads, which is Alamo's roads, and understanding who's responsible for maintenance on keep of the roads. This is particularly important because we have a streets sweeper from Alamo. A few other things, uh we still would like to get an MOU with Almaral for the uh for the uh working with the development. Uh one of the things I didn't realize that at the time that that they can't really help us because it's not their jurisdiction unless we have a uh agreement with that. So they they have an engineer and they highly recommend using an engineer to help us with the development, but to do that, we have to have an MOU and then they could help address any issues uh with engineering. Um let's see, they mentioned, we mentioned about having a capital improvement plan, maybe a meeting about the capital improvement plan maybe later on this year. Uh and the recommend that the budget includes hiring a forester to develop a management plan for the Buckingham property, where we have logs there, which can be logged in a few years and uh uh a forester could help uh help us uh make that more valuable by helping with the uh fitting of the trees. And finally, which was this was a this was stood last year, next week, uh to have some financial review subcommittee or maybe town counselors uh be part of a subcommittee to review some of the uh finances, particularly for two twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three. It's not about this year. It's not about, and it some people thought it was about what we're doing this year, but it was really about, we finally got the actual numbers for the for twenty two, twenty twenty three last year, and that's included. And to, you know, some some of the town council want to go over that with us. I met with uh Melody and Javier today about uh about incoming expenditures and about how that works. But it goes back to uh last year at this time, we had a substitute of uh a person helping with the treasurer, I mean, and she saw that we had eight thousand dollars in surplus. And then when she went through it, she found out we only had eleven thousand dollar surplus. And then we got auditor report today, we we were down thirty, below thirty eight thousand. So there there is some concern about what happened with some of that money and why it was not uh verified. And I've also heard recently too that there, we are missing some tools. Um and there may have been stolen or whatever. But anyway, so part of that is to look at the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three budget and see if we could uh make heads and tails of why that is. And along with that, talking to Ms. Melody and Javier, we're looking at getting a new auditor because we just got the audits and the numbers for the budget this week and uh the the budget, the auditor uh was behind and and there's a lot of inaccuracy. So that will be part of the discussion of the budget. They'll they'll cost more to get a better auditor, but but I think that's a essential thing that we discuss and maybe happen.
Thank you. Any questions on government services?
Bill, uh is that the sweeper from V dot or from Alamo County?
The only one I know, I don't know much about the treatments, but uh but I guess V that's just doing Alamo. I'm not sure which one to do, but.
Uh well, of course, we had a meeting with V doc earlier this year and they, you know, volunteers there for
Right.
well, you know, when we need it, not 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 a regular scheduled thing, but uh and then at the workshop last week, we mentioned V doc. And being being the woman. Um so I'll just wonder whether it's V doc or one.
Well, for us, well, we were just talking about street thing in general, but uh no, which one's which, that's all. We didn't go into detail. You would know more than we about that.
Well, I know the one hasn't come down yet.
Yes.
Uh and that's supposed to be the twenty fourth of June, just for the general.
But right, twenty fourth street being, I guess, we're gonna have to block off the road to make sure they're not parked there and let the neighbors know about this and like but the the thing I think we all need to know is is uh what streets are they gonna do and and we get some other streets done at St. Francis or something. Because that somebody told me they were only doing streets with curves. And you know, there's a couple of streets that really need it, like Paige Street, Hurst Street, Harrison Street that really could use, you know, some sweet.
I'm sorry, streets with curves?
Yeah, that's what somebody told with curves.
Curves. I thought you said curves. I was like, that's a weird rule.
Curves.
That that would makes more sense.
But that would, that would just be, you know, Valley and and Maine and.
Those things don't work too good unless they have a curve.
Yeah, I don't know how that works. Is that how?
Well, I thought my tour about street sweeper a couple of weeks ago, it was, I I was on this version. It was Alamo.
That's what I thought was there at the meeting.
Maybe it's probably.
It's both. We 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 are in a good position. Um the twenty first Red or Chief of Police and our maintenance man were talking about putting up signage for the twenty fourth. So that first sweep, because the machine can only do curbs and gutters, will be on the early morning of the twenty fourth. So they should wrap up by lunch. We decided Monday because we have a lot of local businesses down here. Um the inventory that the Chief of Police made for us had about eight or nine bullet points. So that's a big portions of roads. Um so he was pretty thorough about that to kind of maximize that. And then uh the mayor was talking with our supervisor, Mike Pruitt, and we're looking at trying to get the county one to come down after Fourth of July. So I'm still trying to, I'm doing emails back and forth and trying to figure out the right time uh between offering my maintenance man to put or our maintenance man to put up signage and get the information. Um information on the roads that'll be affected, the date uh I believe is posted to go up the nineteenth uh so day after tomorrow. So I like those details. I will hand the number if I share it with you guys all the time. Not almost more than you know, two guys.
No, you know, yeah.
Yo.
Yeah, there's only two counties in Virginia that have roads. Henry was one of them. Another one's in Virginia, states from my memory. So Canada, Virginia don't have roads. It's either the state or us down here. And we have to go through alcohol candidate for appropriations. I guess that's the reason for this new agreement that we never had one before.
There were a couple of roads were just Scottsville, right? Like Jefferson Street, Jefferson, they don't like so.
Really? Okay.
I thought Jefferson Street, I think Jefferson Streets. I think it is.
Well, I don't know. Okay. See, I don't know. I just know the county doesn't have any roads. There's nowhere in Alamo County or or ninety two other counties in Virginia, just two counties. So Alamo County doesn't take care of us, but we have to go through them to get the funding and go to V doc, use their engineer, etc. The way it's panning out now. Well, Javier, I appreciate your help. It's anybody else's. We're getting this done.
Um probably. I'll update you once I figure out the dates with their staff. Um and we'll do the same thing, same roads, um put out some reasonable uh notification and try to keep as early as we can so we don't affect anyone on the commuter business. That's a big one.
A big one, yeah.
Oh, it's worse.
Um so two things which we've talked about. One is that we did get the Bama Works grant as has been mentioned. We applied for eight thousand dollars to support the installation of E nine one one signs for emergency identification of properties uh for first responders. That uh so we we applied for eight thousand dollars. We received five thousand dollar award. We went to ARB, got their recommendation on signage. Next meeting, working session, I will bring to you all for your consideration and ordinance that mandates those E nine one one signs on properties. Again, if you recall, that's important for new development, especially so that the developers will include that in their planning process. We hope to uh install them and pay for them for the residents in the historic district of the town first and go from there after. So that's kind of the plan right now. Uh and secondly, last time we talked about uh the request for advocacy for a cert team, a team of volunteers that would assist our um our town responders in the event of an emergency. Uh we're gonna cover that. I'd like to call for your support and a vote for that later. So we won't go into detail uh at this point. But that team of volunteers, given that we're coming into some potentially bad weather seasons and other things, going to be beneficial. So we can discuss that later.
Questions for Mr. Horns?
Hey, guys, any exciting news?
At my uh week meeting with Chief Jenkins, uh they were working a little shorthand at the cost of one vacation. So he and and also Woods have put in some extra time there lately of their ability. Uh they continue to um interact with the uh local churches and civic organizations that have passed, and that's kept them busy this long too. So all in all, I I would say our performance, um it's in good shape and I continue to to be here doing things about, you know, personnel we have.
Any questions for Mr. Payman? All right. Thank you all. We had a look in this evenings and so there seems to be a lot of concern about the project. It's probably not gonna get started till after July first of next year, but it's good to be on top of it before this comes on top of you. We have Mr. John Anderson from Alamo Moro County with us this evening. He's gonna give about a ten minute or so overview of this water vein project and uh this is not a question and answer period, but you contact him through his office with specific questions. Uh there will be other public meetings in foreseeable future when he will be able to address each question individually. But right now, I'll turn it over to Mr. Anderson, engineer for Alamo County.
Hi, I'm I'm very pleased to uh to be here and present on behalf of the Service Authority, what we've thought about for a long time and something that's uh been a long time coming, I'd say, for some of these uh uh older pipes. But uh we, I just want to introduce some of the folks that I work with. And um I will do that. I don't want to overlook that you've made mention of questions and answers and I I I will be here till the very end of the um council meeting this evening. And so any folks here who would like um uh to ask questions, I will give a best answer to those questions tonight. And for anybody joining by uh remotely by Zoom, um the last slide, I think, of the presentation, that's my telephone and email. And that's that's my duty is to try to be helpful and answer questions. That really is my duty. I'm John Anderson. I'm a engineer. I've been for some twenty seven years, worked with Alamo County Service Authority, and I'm uh privileged to be a part of this project. Senior Civil Engineer, I work with Jeremy Lynn, who's the Director of Engineering, that here. When I'm concerned, who is, I'm gonna go ahead and call him, the Executive Director of the Alamo County Service Authority. And I mean, as soon as I post, he's been appointed, it's been for July one. So we're very glad for that. Austin Mars, uh for Vanuatu Water and Sewer Authority. And if you want, he's a senior uh civil engineer with RWUSA. RWUSA is Ravanna Water and Sewer Authority. They're an organization that treats all the water and wastewater in 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 Scottsville and throughout Alamo County. Uh so uh grateful for uh Austin's participation and I will make mention that Javier has arranged with Austin to return later this summer. Uh oh, it's nineteen, not believe it. When he comes back, I'll come back and maybe also Charles Law. But I was grateful to have Charles Law, the professional engineer with Whitman Record and Associates, and he uh has been living this project and he will uh step through uh these slides. So I will be here till the end and uh for any of you folks who have questions, especially after we're done, even if you want to speak in the hall, I don't want to hold anybody. I'll be here till the finish. Come on, sir. You're there. Thank you. Thank you, John. I'm gonna eat a food made at Hamford, if you want, everyone.
Yeah.
Uh so what I'll do is just give you a a a broad overview of the project, um the limits of the project and some of the things we uh identified trying to construct. And some of the things you uh identified, trying to construct concerns, uh, things that were taken into account as we uh complete our design. On the project, so a little bit of background on the project. So just a little bit of background, this is just one of the phases of the water main replacement project uh in the town. Um, and the Service Authority does a number of projects uh every year where they are replacing asbestos cement pipelines in their system. Um, this is one of the projects identified in the capital improvement uh program, but essentially the pipelines uh that we're gonna talk about. And I think within the limits of the project have been in service since the mid-sixties. And it's asbestos, asbestos cement pipe uh that was very common, uh, installed back in the sixties, uh. But this, the, the product is, is near, you know, it's used for life, uh, so we're gonna replace. Um, replace that pipeline and, and make some other improvements on the project as well. Um, as I indicated in water main replacement there, um. And within the limits of the project, we're gonna decrease the fire flow capability and add additional fire hydrants to provide better fire coverage. Uh, for the pipelines, for the tanks, and within the limits of the project, we're gonna replace all the existing. Uh, water surfaces that are within that limit of the project, uh, we'll get also new meters. Um, meter boxes, so that all that infrastructure will be new uh with the project and then. Uh, there's a number of those that will require, you know, pavement restoration and overlay. Uh, within the limits of the project, and I'll, I'll talk about that shortly. Uh, this is just the uh, basically, I'm gonna put the two project boards, we get back here, uh, if you'd like to take a look at those. And just talk to briefly about the limits of the project. Um, the photo on the left shows the limits of the project, basically extending from the Scottsville Water Treatment Plant. Uh, along James River Road, um, up to the intersection where he's off there with Warren. Uh, continues down Warren all the way to, to, to Valley, it goes across Valley, it goes up Morris Hill. Uh, road and, and a little ways up Hardwood Streets. Um, for, for this portion of the road and for the project, and then there's a, a segment right in town to. Uh, that, that has a number of replacements identified as well. So this is sort of the northern portion of the, of the town portion of, of the, of the replacement. And um, and basically, this is really just showing you the. The two primary distribution feeds that, that serve the town. Uh, one comes off of James River Road and Warren, the other one comes down Hardwood Street. And these are the two primary distribution sources for, for uh potable water for the town. Um, and the figure there, it's a little tough to see, but there's two pressure reducing station, pressure reducing. Valvials there that, that reduce the system pressure uh as it comes into, uh, into the town. And this is the portion that's in town, um. And just to give you the overall minutes of this, I'm gonna do my best here and see if I can get this, get this right here, but uh. It's along Fleet Street, uh, basically from Page over to Valley. Um, it's along Page from Fleet Street North, three blocks up to Lindsay, I believe. Um, we're doing only just one block on Valley Street, um, from Main Street South. And we're doing a block on Main Street, and we're also doing about three blocks from Bird Street, from Harrison Street. Of West to the end of, to the end of Bird, so that's the, the end town portion of the project. Uh, some of the construction challenges of the project, obviously, is to maintain existing service. Um, along the, the, the project limits, a lot of new infrastructure is put into place and tested. Um, and they're brought online, uh, there are a couple of locations on the project that are gonna be quite difficult. Um, we continue with mainly Warren Street and Morse, Morse Hill Road, as you know, are very. Very narrow streets, very tight corridors and um, there are lots of construction there, very, are very tight. Um, we do expect some detours, possible road closures, particularly on those two streets. Um, to establish, allow it, my tractor, you know, the ability to establish a private work zone. And, and to, to, to get everything onto place. But, um, we will do our best to maintain access into, uh, into the central core of the town. And of course, the pipeline will be the product for that, not access to, to all projects during the project. Uh, talk about road closures, um, that, that will probably happen in certain uh park portions of the project. Uh, the maintenance of traffic will be something that will be coordinated with, uh, with our planner, these will be got, uh, to get the final plan approval. Um, and I mentioned, uh, pavement restoration, uh, is, is gonna be a big part of this project, so the, the streets that will be impacted. Will be fully restored, will be paved. And, and, you know, finally, I can't over emphasize the, uh, creating a safe work environment for the path tractor. And also for the, uh, for the affected properties and property owners of town. These are just some of the facilities that, that you've made and familiar with. Um, these are actually advanced uh facilities, uh, but the, the product will actually start at the Scottsville Water Treatment Plant. You know, it, uh, will extend beyond uh the Scottville Tank and Finish Water uh pump station there. And then there's the, the route of the seven-nine-five tank, which is north of town, uh, and then there's a super pump station that's been developed by this. That's about a facility. Looking at just a little more, uh, little bit broader overview for the budget, so this is a, a far rest apartment site. So from the, from the treatment plant along James River Road, you know, this just shows. A basically a parallel installation and we have twelve-inch water main along James River that's parallel to the existing. Uh, AC water main that will ultimately be, but it's part of the product.